All. Tool.
Recording in progress.
I'll call to order the Tuesday, June 11, 2023. Town Council Committee will hold to order at 6:37. All councils are present. We have a quorum. Calendar Communications, Councilor Parker.
Thank you. Calendar Communications, Communications regarding Route 184, 117, P R C, P R U C, excuse me, Circle of Friends from the library is having a book sale and participated in the parade and received a survey to complete for the Center for Housing Equity and Opportunity Demographics. That's all I had to report.
Thank you. Council Franco.
Thank you. Had numerous communications with residents and also like to report that Groton Little League has hosted All-Stars in Groton here this year for the youth eight to ten as well as the senior division. And the games were held at Calvin Burrows Field and one is currently going on over at Fitch. And the people that came in were in awe of the beauty of our fields as well as excited about our concession stand. And I would like you to know that the senior division is playing a championship game at Fitch right now, and Stonington is in the game, and whoever wins will be moving on to the regionals, which is a big deal. And Groton hosted it. So just wanted to share that with the community. Thank you.
Very cool. Council Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I received all the same emails and communications as other councilors and just wanted to thank Council Franco for reaching out, for volunteering for the Little League All-Stars game. It was a lot of fun to watch all the kids playing ball and it was a great time.
Council McBride?
Thank you. Similar correspondence from residents. I also received several emails and some phone calls regarding this, the decision that was made last week regarding the Property Reuse Committee. Specifically, I received numerous questions on how and if, if residents desired, could they put something on a petition to bring that matter to the ballot box in November. And I looked into it. I looked in the ordinance, read it, and it said something about 15 percent. You need 15 percent of signatures. And it was just a paragraph. So I'm, Town Manager Bird, I'm not sure if you can explain how that process would work, because I'm unfamiliar with.
Does that pertain to policies? Actually, I was asked after the council meeting last week about that. And there is no legal mechanism with a policy to force it to a vote. So that's a petition for a vote.
Okay. Thank you for that. Also held a Public Safety Committee meeting tonight. It was, it was a good meeting. We had some involvement with the fire district, various fire districts. We worked on an analysis that was developed by Chief Driscoll. We made some comments. Council Franco was present. Just the two of us on the committee now because of the resignation of Council Cassari, and did some review of the analysis that was put together and made some changes. We will be meeting again on August 1st to hopefully finalize that product and bring that to the council at a follow-up meeting. The key determinants of the analysis are what percentage of the fire district, I'm sorry, what percentage of the pilot that Groton receives, which is approximately 1.5 in this year's budget, should be allocated to the fire districts. It's ranged from, you know, 28 to 80 percent. And the second determinant is what percentage of that number should be allocated to each fire district. And we're determining that based upon various factors. And that analysis hopefully will be completed on the first and send that to council for review and consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Bordelon?
Thank you. I too attended the July 4th parade. Thank you to Mark Berry, Groton Parks and Rec, and all that were involved. It was a great day, even though it started off kind of wet, but we got through it. It was nice to see the community. I received some of the same communications regarding the Property Use Committee, questions about the document that was originally presented to us back in 2021 with the options to make changes versus the version that was presented to us this time that didn't have an option to make changes, just this or that. I also did receive questions about bringing it to a referendum. I received communications about the referral for, from Councilor Parker in regards to dissolving the sustainability group, the task force, now that we have a higher position, people questioning about that. I also did receive an email from Mrs. Poulsen regarding the light ordinance. I guess she heard me speak at the meeting about the referral I sent. She was curious who, at this point, has agreed to move that forward. I told her to contact with the town manager, since I don't see that until it's actually approved. And I don't even know who approves it, when, once it is approved. Let's see. I also received concerns regarding, you know, concerns in Mystic, regarding noise, as well as, I received the email from Chief Fassaro, the community officer who spoke to us at the last meeting, giving us a card saying he'd like to set us up an appointment. He sent an email, and it was stated in the email from Chief Fassaro that it has to go through the town manager. So I guess my question to the town manager, when do we move forward to have our meeting with the community officer? I guess there's been no follow-up email with that yet. And that's, and I guess that said per the charter. And I think that's all that I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have an answer to that, John, or?
No, I don't.
You don't? Okay, thank you.
Council Westerville?
I received much of the same communications that the other councilors got, with a large majority of those being about the Property Reuse Committee and the document that was rejected. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Jacome?
Thank you. Yes, I did attend the 4th of July parade, as many of us did. I think even with the washout of the rain, we had a great turnout. So I thank Parks and Rec and many others who organized that. That was a great event. Similar referrals as well. My cannabis referral did get support, so hopefully sometime in the next month or so we'll be receiving an update on that. And similar communications. Thank you.
Thank you. I also attended the 4th of July parade. We honored Jerry Locken, who had a long service to the town of Groton. He was a great loss to our town. I hear he's doing great things in Waterford, so it was just nice to see him again. Onto the approval in a minute. Sorry?
I had a quick question.
For who?
For the town manager. Is there any referrals that have come through that have received support or not that you could update us on under communications?
Give me one sec. I don't have communications, but I can answer that. I was just pulling it up. To date, there has been, let's look here, one support for your referral for the PZC at Town Council, Town meetings. Cannabis did receive two support, and light pollution has not received any support to date.
Thank you.
Thank you. Onto the approval of minutes. I'll make a motion to approve the June 27, 2023 minutes. So move.
Second, Jones?
Moved by Melendez, seconded by Jones. Council McBride?
Yeah, I just have one comment. I'm going to abstain from approving these minutes. And the reason being is, on page four and five, we talk about the marketing of the property and the Property Reuse Committee. And I don't necessarily agree, or maybe don't remember, that this council indicated for the planning and zoning to stop marketing the property. So I may be incorrect, but I don't feel like I have enough information to support that because I didn't think that was the case, so I'll be abstaining.
Okay. Council Bordelon?
I can agree with Councilor McBride. I did go back and watch the meeting back, I think it was October 2021, watched it in its entirety. And I can agree with that same, I think that should be amended because there's nowhere, anywhere that I could find that that was ever stated on the record. I did also go through all of my emails as well, and I watched all meetings pertaining, which wasn't many. We had the document, and they had the amendments that the town manager brought forward, and we did nothing with it. But we never had another meeting after that to edit the 2021 until it came forward here. So I can too agree with Council McBride that nowhere on the record can I find in any minutes that I went through over the last two years and videos I've watched over the week, weekend and week, that state ever, that there was a vote to stop that. Thank you. So I will also abstain.
There was never a vote. It was, it was a consensus.
I do want to clarify that tonight, and Paige had just reached out to me, too. My recollection is there was direction not to move projects forward, not to issue RFPs, but that, that was not to say you couldn't do passive marketing. You wouldn't do intense marketing until you have a policy. But my recollection is just generally not to bring projects forward. And that was Paige's recollection also.
Thank you.
With that being said, should the minutes be revised to reflect that?
You can't revise it, because that's what was said. So you either strike it or you leave it. It was said, yeah.
From my, my interpretation of approving minutes is you approve the minutes of what happened at that meeting, whether information was correct from historical or not. It is what happened at that meeting, not what happened prior to that meeting. It was, so it's not correcting history, it's correcting what exactly happened at that meeting if it was incorrect. Was a misstatement at the meeting or a vote was incorrect. And this is why probably we should have less in our minutes. Thank you.
All right. Council Bordelon?
Can I make an amendment to these minutes? It says Councilor Bordelon left the meeting at 7:02. Could you quit to attend the planning and zoning game? It wasn't, I just disappeared. I went to another meeting because there was a hearing. So if that could be amended, please. Or would you like me to send an email? How would you like me to get that amended?
Whatever the council wants to do.
I know it's, when, when Councilor Parker goes to TVCCA, we usually note that she was attending a meeting that's pertaining to the council. So I was attending a meeting that was pertaining to the council. So I just would like that noted that I was doing the people's work. I had just disappeared.
Only if you announced that during the meeting, that you were going to attend, if you announced it, yes, it can be placed in the minutes. But if you did not announce it and you left the meeting, it cannot be placed in the minutes. To reflect that, I email both, since you mentioned TVCCA, I emailed both John and the, Mr. Manager and the mayor at TVCCA, which is always the fourth unless a special meeting has happened. So they acknowledged I'm at that meeting before our meeting starts, why I'm not in attendance. You left the meeting without announcing that you were going next door.
Manager Bird?
Before the meeting, Council Bordelon did it for me. She was going to be attending the PZC meeting. So just.
Thank you.
Yeah. I did, didn't want to interrupt at that time, and I didn't know if it was going to coincide with if the Property Use Committee thing was going to be the same time, so I was waiting. And I did announce when I returned where I went. It's a simple addition. It's really, I'm not trying to make a big wave here. It's a simple, Porsha attended P and Z meeting. That's all I'm asking. Thank you.
Council Franco?
Nothing. Forget it. Not anymore than that.
Council Jacome?
Thank you, Mayor. I mean, I have some experience in doing minutes, my prior work. And, I mean, whoever is doing these minutes, it's, it's how would that person who's doing the minutes ever know that, where you were going unless they knew beforehand? So, yeah, but how was a person, how would the individual doing the minutes know that unless they knew about it? Somebody must have, should have told the person doing the minutes. So that's all I got to say.
Council Westerville?
With all due respect, I don't know why we have to debate this. She told the town manager and others that she was going to be going to this meeting. It's not a big thing. Now we've wasted probably five minutes or more debating on whether or not to put where she went. That just seems very silly to me. Thank you.
Council Parker?
Is that a motion to amend the minutes?
We usually just do them.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So the way we typically do it is you'll vote, since it's, since it's a consent calendar, actually, this isn't a consent calendar.
We're approving the minutes.
We have to do, I think we have to do.
I was just going to throw out there, worse comes the worst. We could ask the, to have it reflected in these current minutes that it was mentioned and where she was, just so it's reflected somewhere.
A point of information?
Sure.
It's been precedent in the past that someone would just say, can you just update this? And we just, we don't even vote.
I know what the precedent is.
We just, out of respect, allow people just to make a simple amendment. I don't, I just don't know why this is such a big deal.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll do the amendment. Since it's not a consent calendar, we should do it this way. So do, do I have an amendment?
Sure.
Okay. Amendment by Council Bordelon. Is there a second? Council Westerville? And this is to add, where Council Bordelon went at 7:02. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. So I'm having, Council Jacome, did you vote?
Aye, in favor.
Okay. Okay, I have five in favor. You two opposed?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, two opposed. Council Parker, you abstained?
Yes.
Okay. Five favorite, two opposed. Franco Jones, one abstaining, Parker. Now to approve the minutes as amended, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstained.
Abstention?
Abstaining, too.
Okay. That is six in favor, zero opposed, two abstaining, Parker, McBride. Thank you. Onto new business, appointment of tree warden.
I'll make the motion? Make a motion to recommend a resolution appointing Jeff Church as tree warden. So move.
Second, Franco.
Moved by Parker, seconded by Franco.
Test, test.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mark Berry, Director of Parks and Recreation. To my right is Jeff Church, who is the parks leader. We're here this evening because currently the town does not have a tree warden. Towns are required to have a tree warden. The tree warden that we had just retired. In, as his role as park leader, Jeff frequently visits with neighbors that have concerns about trees that are on either park property or open space that are but, that residents' property. And he frequently goes out and speaks with the resident to try to address, assess, and then address the issue. If there's a question frequently, that will get bumped up to the tree warden. And then from that point, if the tree warden and homeowner can't settle the dispute as to health of the tree, the town does have an arborist that we will bring in to kind of resolve any questions about the tree. So this is something that Jeff is accustomed to doing and has a good rapport. I've had no complaints from any of the residents about their dealings with Jeff. We have registered him to attend the tree warden school this fall. So the town is allowed up to a year to have kind of an interim. That would be Jeff's role until he graduates from tree warden school. So my recommendation is that Jeff Church assume the responsibility of interim tree warden until that time that he passes and can be designated the official tree warden.
All right. Council Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Berry. Welcome, Jeff, to the council. And can you just talk a little bit what's in the tree warden academy training? What is it you'll be learning?
I'm not aware of that right now. We just got signed up for it. Probably haven't even got the confirmation on that.
Yeah, we have not received an agenda.
What the curriculum is?
Right.
And your responsibilities will include pretty much all town property, or how about all the open space property? Do you cover that also?
Yes, it would be both, you know, the open space property, the trees along the street. It's pretty all encompassing. We get a fair number of calls right now from people that, you know, they kind of make a natural association between trees and parks. And so frequently, we get the first call if somebody could come out and take a look at their, look at their tree, because they have some concerns about its health or safety, if it's leaning over, you know, somebody's property. And if there's, generally if there's a question on whether, you know, whose property the tree is on, we'll bring in the town surveyor to kind of, to find exactly where, where the tree is, on whose property it is.
I noticed that big tree that fell last night, right on Route 1?
Oh, yeah.
At the gas station, right by Sutton Park.
Yeah, that was, that was a good sized tree.
Pretty major tree that came down. So, well, good. Congratulations. And I'm a outs, you know, a ghost person and an open space person, so I'm out with the trees a lot, so welcome and wish you good luck in it.
Thank you. Council Bordelon?
Thank you and welcome. I just, so just want to make sure I'm understanding from my notes. So the tree warden will be under Parks and Rec and not Public Works? Or how is, I'm just trying to make sure I understand. If someone asked me, how are they, what umbrella are they under?
Jeff Church works in the Parks Division, so yes, it would fall under Parks and Recreation.
All right. And is this just kind of as a need basis? Is there set, is it a full-time position, or how are we structuring it?
It's on an ad need basis. So if somebody from the community reaches out to us and says that they have a concern, that concern will get passed on to Jeff.
Perfect. Thank you. And is there any, I think, you know, I, one of the things I saw, you know, some people, you know, we, we said we're going to look at our town in a more resilient and sustainable way. And with that, you know, it's, the trees may fall because of these big storms and the ground's saturated, so the roots have no way to kind of sustain themselves because of a lot of the flooding. Are we looking to find ways to replace where we can? So does the tree warden not only just remove, but do they work with our sustainability manager to look at ways to replace what we can, or maybe something different in that area? Because shade is also a big part, and we rely on trees for many other reasons. So I was just curious, some towns, they have a policy where if trees come down, they automatically have that in, that replacement would, would occur. And I was just curious as to how that works.
So this Thursday, we are interviewing five consultants, the Sustainability and Resiliency Manager, myself, and the GIS Coordinator, to conduct a street tree inventory. And part of that street tree inventory will look at developing a maintenance plan to look at addressing. addressing areas in the community where there aren't enough trees, and looking at the overall health of the trees and coming up with a sustained plan, not just to take down trees, but to look at replacing trees, and looking to see if we need to diversify the species of trees. You know, a lot of times, I think developers will, you know, put in 30 maple trees in a development, and there really ought to be a diversity of trees. That's in the best interest of the town. So Mr. Church would not be, he would have access to that report once it's completed, which would be sometime later this fall.
Okay. So our tree warden would not just, it'll be removal, not any planting?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you. And good luck. Welcome.
Counselor Jacob?
Thank you, Mayor. I think it's just important to clarify to the viewers that this is not like an additional job. This is just a point of contact for our town to involve trees and things like that, shrubs, and, but they, that this individual, Mr. Church, is the point of contact and will be still assuming his daily job duties for, in his current position, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Right. And this is an unpaid position, so he's taking on this additional responsibility at no financial gain.
Thank you for doing that, Mr. Church. And then the coursework, that's where you'll probably get your training for the laws and provisions to enforce. And so, in the current interim, is there anybody who's still doing that right now?
I don't believe so.
I'm in contact with the former tree warden. I have a great relationship with him. So if he says there's anything that I have a need or any questions I have, feel free to contact him and I'm definitely.
Thank you. And then, I guess, just hypothetical, you don't have to answer, but if the coursework, if the coursework was not to be completed, you just not become appointed? Is that how that works?
We would have to look at somewhere else.
And you're already registered till the fall, so you'll be taken?
Yes, yeah. And receive confirmation that we were accepted. They have a limited number of spaces, and we were accepted.
Perfect. We're good to go.
Thank you.
Counselor Franco?
Thank you. Can you tell me what you do now in your line?
Well, the parks leader is basically in charge of the day-to-day operations of the park maintenance department. I'm sorry. Charge of the day-to-day operation of the park maintenance, taking care of the ballfields for the All-Star Games and all through the little leagues. And we take care of all the parks, the hiking trails, cemeteries, everything that we maintain as the town of Groton.
All right. So we should thank you for all the ballfields looking so fantastic.
Thank the guys for all the ballfield work, yes.
And let's just say there was an epidemic of tree problems in our community.
Mm-hmm.
How would that impact the work you do now? Because we don't want our parks to suffer as well, but I do know from speaking with Counselor Jones that there may be some tree issues popping up here as quite a big epidemic.
Yeah, so there is a couple of blights. There's the beech tree blight, which is going to be killing a number of trees. And I think we've seen that in some of our open space. And there's two trees at Spicer House, which probably are 150 years old, and both of those are beech trees, and those are both dying. So we're going to see that continue. We have dealt with the Emerald Ash Borer, which took out a number of trees. I think it took out close to 30 trees at the, at Thrive 55. And we have started to replace those with a diversity of species, not just one species. So, yes, this, depending on whose property all of these trees are on, it could become a rather big issue.
So that's what I'm, I'm concerned.
I know, I know what you're saying. We take on what we can handle. And what we can't handle, we go hire an outside contractor.
Right.
For the removal of the trees. So it's not like we're not doing other jobs associated with the town of Groton because we're locked into the tree work.
Right. I'm just concerned that you might be looking at trees all over the place and going to properties and having to constantly go in there because trees are dying and having to mark them for removal. And it may take up quite a bit of time.
Yes.
And I do not want that to impact the parks, so. And would this also include roads such as like Route One? If you see trees along Route One, would this be reported, like if they're off of state roads that you, I don't know which property they would be on?
Yeah, it would.
Would he work with them, or would the state come in for those?
Yeah, we would have to determine if it's a tree on town property or a tree on state property, because the trees on state property would be the responsibility of the state.
And I do know Greg, Greg Hannover regularly contacts someone, a particular person at the state when it's on state right away.
Okay. I just didn't know if you would have a role in that as well as having to check the state properties as well. All right. I'm very excited that you are taking on this additional responsibility, and thank you for doing it without an additional cost.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Okay, seeing no further discussion, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions carries unanimously eight, in favor zero, opposed zero, abstaining. Thank you.
Thank you.
Onto nuclear safety grant.
I can read it for you.
Page 12, thank you.
I make a recommendation, a motion to recommend a resolution authorizing town manager John Burt to execute any and all documents to accept the nuclear safety grant in the amount of $70,000 and refer the matter to the RTM. I so move.
Second?
Moved by Parker, seconded by Borlon. And we have Chief Usaro here.
Good evening, everyone. Captain B is with us this evening as well. He's going to outline what the nuclear safety grant entails and what we're intending to use it for this year.
Thank you.
Captain?
Good evening, everyone. How are you?
Hi.
Can, can everyone hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, perfect. So each year, we apply for this, the Nuclear Safety Emergency Program Grant as part of being in the EPC. This grant allows us to get a little portion of salary reimbursement for the emergency management director, and also allows us to purchase equipment or projects that we outline. Last year with this grant, we submitted and presented to you guys, which was passed, was installing traffic cameras along the evacuation routes in our emergency planning zone. And this year is basically Phase Two. So we're looking to continue with that project, to continue with the installation and get them up and running, and add a couple more in intersections that we couldn't afford to do with the money we were given last year. So it's basically a continuation of last year's equipment grant.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay. Seeing no questions, so I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions carries unanimously eight, in favor zero, opposed zero, abstaining. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Good night. Good night.
Good night. Onto the Groton Open Space Association Grant Application Endorsement Request.
Groton Open Space Association Grant Application Endorsement, motion to adopt a resolution to approve the Groton Open Space Association's grant application to the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, DEEP, for the Open Space and Watershed Land Acquisition Grant Program.
Second?
Moved by Jones, seconded by Borlon.
Good evening. My name is Joan Smith. I'm Vice President of Groton Open Space Association. We also have with us Dan O'Connell, Gosa's president, and Tom Olson, who is helping us with the PowerPoint presentation. Gosa proposes to purchase a property we're going to call Center Groton Preserve. There's a location off of 117, that's on the left there. There's a driveway access and a 50-foot right-of-way. And at the bottom of the map, there's an access point from Phillips Avenue, which is close to the firehouse on Candlewood Hill Road. There is 82 acres of the larger parcel, seven acres of the smaller parcel. It abuts Groton's Avery Farm, which is 305 acres, to the north there. And next to that square parcel, that's a part of Candlewood Ridge. So it actually makes a loop going around the three properties that are in the center. So there, basically, this 89-acre parcel will connect to about 430 acres of protected land already.
Could you move the mic closer to your, yeah, thank you.
Yeah. I'll go to the next slide.
Okay.
Most of you, I think, are familiar with Groton Open Space Association. We're a 501(c)(3) land trust. And we will develop trails that link to existing trails. And we'll be able to have a long-distance loop that goes between Avery Farm, Candlewood Ridge, and the acres around. So, okay, the next, next slide? Okay. The property has a core forest, which is key in climate resiliency. It's key for wildlife habitat. This property is defined as greater than 250 acres of unbroken forest, without any roads or other interruptions. There is 17.5 acres of forested wetlands. These wetlands drain by two streams into the Groton Reservoir. So this property is important for keeping the Groton Reservoir system clean. The large amount of forest also promotes climate resiliency. It stores carbon. The wetlands can store tremendous amounts of water in the case of flooding or excessive rains. And then it can recharge the water, the groundwater, in periods of drought. The property will be open to the public for public access. And I think it's important to recognize, as I said, this core forest. Certain wildlife species require more than 350 feet away from a road in order to survive. We need your support. We are applying for a state DEEP ASWA grant. That's Open Space Watershed Land Acquisition Grant. It's the same type of grant that the town used to purchase the Wolfbrook property. Because we are in a targeted and distressed town, we are required to get the endorsement of the town council in order to be eligible for this grant. This will help us tremendously defray the costs of the property. The, if we receive the grant, the state will put a conservation easement on the parcel. And we're beginning a fundraising campaign to raise the matching funds. As you can see, it's zoned RU40, which is basically one acre lots. The tax is very small. The tax is, for the large parcel, was, let's see, $553.65. So it's not a big deal to take it off the tax rolls. And the current tax for the small parcel was $91.45. And one reason why the tax is so low is this property is under a 10 mil PA 49 forestry program. It was begun in 1963 and will expire in 2063. So if it is withdrawn from that program, there are high penalties to pay. And this property has been subdivided before. The easiest parcels to develop have been carved out of this property. So there's barely eight acres or so that's available for development. And under one acre zoning, it's really not suitable for affordable housing. It's not the answer to our housing crisis. And the, the benefits to the town, as I said before, are protection of the watershed, climate resiliency, outdoor recreation. This, this is, our properties have been extremely popular, particularly during the COVID experience, where one of the only activities people could do safely was hike outside. Many people discovered our properties and continue to go there to appreciate and enjoy them. And I think in periods of high stress, urbanization, all of the things that seem to be coming down the pike, we need a quiet place where we can go and be with nature, be able to relax with our thoughts. I think it serves a very important need for the town. So, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to hear them. I had offered to give tours, and I still can. It's a beautiful property. It's a high ridge trail. It has rock faces, cliffs, historic stone structures, a very small, pretty little step waterfall with little pools. It really is a special place. Okay. So do you have any questions?
Sure. Counselor Jones?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Joan, for the presentation and for bringing this forward. I would concur, I did take advantage with you of taking a tour of this property and have walked over extensively one end to the other. And I would concur also, it has beautiful ridges and hill slopes. And I think what's also nice about this property is it has very minimal briars and bays on the ground. It's a pretty open, clean forest floor. So it makes it a good place to, to build some trails and do some stuff. I know with the Wolfbrook property, we had some issues with different easements. We had to get those cleaned up before we did anything. Does any of that exist on this property at all?
No, there are no easements. The seven-acre property is undevelopable. It's assessed that way because it has no access, except we can access it from Candlewood Ridge. So... But it does have the 10 mil program, forestry program. It doesn't prohibit development, but it requires penalties if it's withdrawn from the program before 2063.
On the, the map that you had put up, it shows a driveway off of 117, driveway access. Is there any ability to put some kind of parking there, even?
Yes, there's, there is a grassy area just off of the state right-of-way already. And there is an area, as you go up the driveway, there's a house on the right. This property owns the road. The house has, actually has a right-of-way to use that road. On the left-hand side is room for probably about six or eight cars. And at the end of Phillips Avenue, there is space for parking, too. It's undeveloped. There's no trail there now, but there is potential to build that there.
So the, the 50-foot right-of-way, that's off, on state property, or?
Yeah, it's, it's available, but I don't think it's necessary because it's so close to the other road there, right next, where that house is located. That would be our main entrance.
Just the one further?
Right. You can also access it from Barton Lane in Ledyard. Just, you can park on the street next to the power line and then walk through Avery Farm to get to it. And then Gosa has an entrance on Gold Star Highway for Candlewood Ridge. And you can enter there and hike up the hill to get to this property as well.
Is it your intent to kind of increase the trails that are already in Candlewood Ridge into this property?
Yes, we, there are existing trails now that actually do connect all the properties. Once we do a survey, we'll have to make sure that, that it stays on the property and not on the neighboring property. But we've been advised to keep that core in the middle as protected as possible and keep our trails around the core. So we'll, we'll keep, we'll use the existing Candlewood Ridge trail. So we'll, we'll keep, we'll use the existing Candlewood Ridge trails to loop around and come up on this one ridge trail. And we're not likely to develop many more because of the priority of protecting the wildlife and the species there.
So when, if you get this grant, or approval for this grant, this gives you 75%? Is that correct?
Up to. As you know, you don't always get, you don't always get what you want.
But potentially, so the purchase?
Potentially, it could be up to 75%. With your endorsement, it gives us 10% above the normal 65% that a land trust would get.
And your purchase price is $445,000, so potentially it could give you $310,000, which is pretty nice.
That is nice. It would be a big help. It would be a big help to.
Right. And allows you to use your funds in other places.
Right. Plus, there is an added benefit when you have the state do that. We get, basically, their attorney general and their surveyors and other experts reviewing all of our application and all we have. So they dot the i's and cross the t's for all of the legal things. So, and it gives an added protection. If we were to go out of business, the easement would follow the property. So another land trust or municipality or someone would still be subject to that easement.
Can you just, I'm just looking for the correct name of it. Can you just talk a little bit about what the PA, I just want to get the right name. Oh, the PA 490 is, just a little bit of what that is.
Okay, there's two steps. One was the 10-mil program, and I think there's only about 10 properties in the state that are still under the 10-mil program. It's a 100-year program for protection of forests. And after year 50, there's new regulations that allows this 10-mil to proceed for another 50 years, but they, some of the conditions and regulations for the 490 will apply to it. So it's sort of a, it's still a 10-mil, but a slash 490 hybrid. We tried to talk to the tax assessor to see what the nuances were, and it's a little hard to pinpoint at this point.
What kind of, so, and can you just tell me what happens, so if you, once you purchase this property, right now it's under the 10-mil forestry program, so once you purchase the property, does that go away because it's being put into?
It can go to a 501(c)(3) land trust without penalty to be used for perpetuation of the forestry.
And if it came, if to take this thing off?
With no tax, no penalty.
And if for some reason that somebody wanted the 490 taken off, they'd have to pay all the back taxes going back to?
I couldn't nail that down. There's also calculations of board feet and how much the forest has grown up since that time and the value of the timber. So it got very hard when, I think unless someone's going to do it, it's a lot of trouble, I think, to calculate how much taxes do, so.
And this property's been on the market for some years and has had no interest because it's just, it's really kind of unbuildable, basically.
Yeah, it was priced at 660 a few years ago. It didn't sell, and we finally were able to negotiate. No one else, no builders appeared interested. One reason is that it's ledge and wetlands. It's very difficult to develop, and it would take a long road and quite a bit of infrastructure to actually complete it. It's difficult, I guess you can, but it's difficult to do septic or anything like that when you're, when you've got granite there.
Right. There's no water or electricity, there's nothing on it, or no utilities of any kind on this property?
No, no. As I said, the easiest parcels have been carved off already, closer to the road. Behind those houses, those lots, is wetlands.
And I can attest to the ledge, there's quite a bit. It's what, the ledge is what makes it beautiful, is what also makes it difficult to do anything with. So I'm excited about this piece of property, and it'll be a nice addition, and I think will give a great addition to Groton, and I continue moving forward with our open space. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Parker?
Just one question, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Does this touch on Ledyard's side a little bit? Does it touch someone's property?
The Avery Farm goes into Ledyard. This particular property does not go into Ledyard.
So it's not touching, and not abutting against someone's property?
It's not abutting what?
Anyone's property on that other side. So I tried looking it up, I haven't been there, I don't, sorry, I don't go out in the woods, too many mosquitoes for me. So I was looking at the tip of it, because if I'm looking at it correctly, center of Groton almost goes into Ledyard, correct? And I was trying to Google it on the map.
Almost, almost. It's south of, basically, the, the, the prop, the town line is just north of the power line. It's, that's, you have to go quite a ways through Avery Farm, you get, then you get to the power line. And then you're on the, across the Ledyard border. The Avery Farm property is, has, is half in Ledyard and half in Groton.
All right, so.
And this is south of the Avery Farm property.
Okay, so the other one. All right, that's all I need to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Bordelone?
Thank you. As a big supporter of protecting our wetlands, our watershed, and definitely in support of making sure that we're looking at Groton in a resilience and sustainable way, this property speaks to that, and it's very important that we protect it. And I think it's a great opportunity that you guys are seeking opportunities like this that are going to benefit, that also have a, you know, monies attached to it through the state that are, you know, you guys are willing to seek. So I commend you guys for your efforts to protect our watershed and look for ways to protect land, because once land is gone, it's gone. And it's nice to keep this one in our town. I had the privilege of touring this property many years ago when I was part of the Avery Point program, where we were, we were in middle school or high school, I can't quite remember. And I remember being a long day out there, and we were testing water way up and looking at how the flow of water dumps into our watershed. And we were doing testing for months, checking to see, like, what type of contaminants were in it this far up and what was dumping at the end. And so I've been able to hike a majority of that property at one point, and it was very extensive and definitely undevelopable as far as major infrastructure. But definitely a diamond in the rough to be able to walk and keep clean for our watershed. So I think this is a great effort, and I'm excited to see it come to fruition, and I mean obviously in full support. And I'm excited to see the state come back, and hopefully you guys get a good percent, and hopefully the campaign fundraising is a success. So I appreciate, you know, all the work that you guys do and have done for many years. And I'm excited to see this project happen and the purchase of this property come to fruition. So thank you for your hard work and efforts and dedication to our community.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Franco?
Thank you. Mr. Burt, can you tell me what percentage of open space we have in Groton?
Tom would be the better one to answer that.
I have the sign here. Just for full disclosure, I'm Tom Olson from the Conservation Commission. The Conservation Commission did review this last night and did send a recommendation for your approval here. As far as from the way that the town, for the Conservation Commission is looking at things, we, back in 2020, approved a open space conservation plan, and in that we had a number of definitions for open space. We've kind of focused in on, over the last year or so, definitions, using the state definitions for protected and preserved open space. The Conservation Commission has reviewed all the, over 500 parcels in the town that are considered in the open space inventory. We have an inventory that's now tied into the town GIS system so that we can pull off the maps and it explains and keeps additional information regarding whether a parcel is protected or preserved. If you take a look at the protected and preserved right now, I just did, I just checked the numbers this evening, is that the total landmass that can be protected in the town of Groton is 20,377 acres or 31.8 miles. The state has ownership in Groton of 1,578 acres, which is 7.7%, and that's over 26 parcels. The total municipal, this would be for the city of Groton, the Groton Utilities, as well as the town of Groton, we have 3,314 acres, which is 16.2%, which has covered 182 acres and 70 easements. And then, then there's privately owned.
Did you say 182? I'm sorry, did you, how many acres was that?
3,314 acres. Okay, that's over 182 parcels and 70 easements. And then the total that's by the, owned by private organizations such as GOSA, Avalonia, Groton Long Point Association, et cetera, is 931 acres for 4.5%. They, that encompasses 73 different parcels. So if you add all those numbers up, it's 5,822, which is 28.5% of the town is considered open space. And we recognize that the state of Connecticut's goal is to have 20, is for the, the state to own between 10 and 11% and, and then the cities for another 10%, for about 21% goal in accordance with the state green plan. But there's also a federal executive order that is established in January 21 of a 30% goal by 2030. So we're kind of almost there, and this is good. We still have about 290 acres to go, so this is a portion of that, that's maybe a third of the way there. So we're looking pretty good from a Conservation Commission perspective. Thank you.
Okay. So I was just expecting like a really quick answer from Mr. Burt. So then I was going to thank you for coming. And so, am I correct, this is a Greenway connector, is that correct? It'll connect to other properties, so you can have extensive trails, is that correct?
Yeah, yeah. As I said, it'll, it'll connect to the 305 acres of Avery Farm and the 91 acres of Candlewood Ridge, plus the town of Ledyard has opened, they own and manage this habitat, the power line, and they, there's a conservation easement for seven acres of a former cranberry bog. And the town has some small easements for the Patrick's Court.
Is this part of the Avalonia Trail?
Of the what?
Well, Avalonia, is there, you know, there a trail that they're trying to make from?
Well, there is the Triton Trail. It comes close to the proposed.
Triton Trail.
Triton Trail.
That's what it is.
You could cut in right on our North Street, North Road entrance. You could come in from the Triton Trail and come in through there. Their alternative route goes to the east of this property, their proposed alternative to the east. Tom's on the Triton Trail Committee, so he could answer that better than me.
And the Triton Trail is still having negotiations with Groton Utilities, so we haven't made any decisions whether or not they're going to be on the preferred alignment or the alternative alignment. Still working with Groton Utilities pending a decision from them.
All right. And so you're trying to acquire basically 89 acres, and the town just acquired 166. You're saying the town is currently at 28.5% of open space. And I've had these conversations with Joan before, so I'm going to bring it up again. When I'm in the community, I get a lot of pushback by people saying, when is enough enough of open space? Like, we have so much of it. So my question basically is, when will enough be enough? Will you stop when you hit 30%? Is that your number, or will you continue?
I prefer to say it's a goal, not a cap. I think the open space is one of the assets of our town. In fact, I moved here because I wanted to be close to Haley Farm, and other people have said the same thing, that they, they appreciate that we have so much forest and open space. So I say it as an asset, and I'm not the one to promise to cap it.
As far as from the Conservation Commission, this will be part of the POCD that'll be coming up for 2026. As, or we were discussing this last night, the Conservation Commission, we have a meeting with the planning and zoning who own that process in October to talk about what things are we going to be putting in that POCD version in the future. And hopefully by that time, we'll be at that 30% so that we can make a more informed decision as far as where does the town want to go after that.
Because that is the question, and a lot of comments that I do receive from people when it comes to open space in regards to balancing the open space as well as development. And I understand, like, the taxing, the amount that we receive in taxes, it's unbuildable, I understand all those type of things. And is GOSA going to blaze the trails, and will they maintain them going forward?
Yes, we have a very good stewardship organization, and if you visit our properties, you'll see that the trails are very well-marked. We have maps. That's not, that's not a problem. We'll take very good care of it.
No, I'm sure you'll have Councilor Jones out there helping you as well. I will support this, but I look forward to further in-depth answers because it's hard to answer people who want to know, like, when will enough be enough? And I also get comments that, and I'm happy that this is more in center Groton area, because it seems like some people are saying one side of town gets more attention than the other when it comes to, like, trying to protect open space. So I'm glad that this has moved over to a partial, to a parcel that is more in the center of our community.
It's in reach of quite a large neighborhood along the Candlewood Hill Road area. And across by Farquhar Park, there are more homes there. So this part of the community really hasn't had access to open spaces, too far to go to our other entrances. But they can have access to this entire block now.
All right. Well, I look forward to further communications on open space numbers. And I thank you for coming and speaking, and as always, I have a lot of respect for you and our communications that we have together and all that you've done for our community. And I will, I will support this, and thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Jacome?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a two-part question. Are you confident if you don't get the grant, you have other funds available for purchasing?
Yes, yes. We do, we do, we can fundraise and purchase ourselves, but it makes it much, much harder.
And how confident do you feel in fundraising the remaining amount, depending if you get, if you were to get the max 65 or 75%?
We have, we have quite a few community and national grants that have been supportive of all our projects, and we have a very strong base of donors within the community. So I'm very confident that we can raise the amount, but it's much, much harder to raise the entire amount than it is to raise matching funds.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Bordelone?
I guess for me, like, knowing 30% is the federal, you know, I don't, I personally feel there's never enough. I think you can't get back land that is once developed, and I think this is a great example of land that's not really developable, that's great to capture and take on. So I don't receive those same questions. In fact, the people that I'm around are asking me, when are we going to protect more, and what are we, what are we doing to balance more, and really concerned about our watershed with the highway that runs over it and all the runoff going over there. So I commend your efforts to bring up more parcels of land and in different areas of town. And one of the reasons I stay here, too, is because of the land, the access, trails, the ability to have open space here. So it's one of our things that sets us apart, and a lot of people come into town because of that. I look at all the land around our watershed and am very concerned about our future. It's one thing to develop it, but, you know, you can't get back once you start to contaminate any further than what we have. So I think this is great, and I think we're getting close to that 30% federal, and who knows what they're finding now with all the other problems that we're seeing and all the fires and everything. There's talk that, you know, those numbers may go up, that they may say 35% or, you know, we don't know. So I think we're doing a great job here, and I think you guys are always looking for opportunities. And so I just think that you can't put a price tag on, you know, good quality land that we're preserving and protecting our watershed. So I commend your efforts. Triton Trail, I went to that ribbon cutting, and, you know, I do use these trails, and I think they're an asset. And we need to seek ways to collaborate in our community to maybe educate people that want more development and less protection. So continue with the great work. Again, I can't thank you guys enough and the volunteer effort. Again, uh, I can't thank you guys enough and the volunteer efforts that you do. Again, as you stated, this could go through without the Town Council. But, you know, it's great that you're coming before us to make that a little easier, and I thank you for that. And as I said, I will be supporting this and continue to support your efforts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no further discussion, I'll call for a vote. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed, abstentions, carries United States eight in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, Joan.
Onto miniature liquor bottle tax allocation method.
May we take a five-minute recess?
Sure. The council stands recess at 7:40. The council's back from recess at 7:40. Onto miniature liquor bottle tax allocation method. Do we have anyone present for this?
No.
Okay.
I can start it off. Uh, as you may recall, in 2021, the state of Connecticut created a 5-cent surcharge on miniature liquor bottles, um, often called nip bottles because of, I think the reason, the impetus was because so many people leave those lying around and, and not recycling them. The intent of those dollars collected, those, um, 5 cents collected, they have to be expended by the municipality on environmental, environmental measures intended to reduce the generation of solid waste in the municipality, reduce the impact of litter caused by such solid waste. Um, and that could include hiring a recycling coordinator, installation of storm drain filters designed to block solid waste and beverage-containing debris, uh, purchase of mechanical street sweeper, vacuum or broom that removes litter. So those are some of the types of things you can use the dollars for. Uh, last year, we received a total of $79,199.35. For, that was the year one funds. Uh, that was split between, uh, Beautification Committee and Public Works, the Solid Waste Fund. That was for the purchase of, uh, solar compactors for downtown Mystic. So far this year, they, they come in. Question?
I'm just writing a note.
For year two, we've received one of two payments. We don't know yet what year two is gonna be totaled. First payment was for $46,199.35, and I would anticipate the second payment probably around that. That was pretty, I think that was fairly near to our second payment last year. So probably around $90,000 for the year. Don't hold me to it, but it should be somewhere around there. Again, we've only received $46,000 and change for, so far though. And we have had some, uh, part of, it's kind of the reason for this item tonight is just to discuss, how do you want to move forward with allocating these funds? Um, we have received some messages. One, you have a letter in the packet from Groton Conservation Advocates with some ideas on mini grants or on a larger project. Parks and Rec put in about solar compactors and composite barrels to replace metal barrels. And then Public Works, I dropped it. Public Works has an interest, is starting to put away money for a trash vacuum. This is not the exact thing. I just, uh, Greg Hanover mentioned this, say, he said, well, can you shoot me something that just shows the type of thing you're talking about? So it's like a mini trash pickup. That's probably about $200,000 though, so it's gonna take a while to save up for that. So just some ideas out there, um, but just looking for guidance for how the council wants to proceed.
I just have a point of information, just so like, before I speak together, what he stated.
Okay. But, well, first we'll go to Counselor Jones. He has his hand up. Counselor Jones?
Uh, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Town Attorney, can you just talk a little bit about, um, the solar compactors? How well they work and what they do and?
Well, they're on order right now, so, I mean, they're well regarded, you know. Greg Hanover had did a lot of research on it. We have three on order right now. He's actually planning, he's got funds to get another three, I believe, so he'll be ordering more. And once you get them, you gotta, you know, the hope is, I, I think he said there's 12 barrels right now in downtown Mystic, and the hope is these, by compacting, he'll be able to take out some barrels from downtown Mystic and, uh, you know, get, you know, for maybe, hopefully the idea would be 12 barrels down to six compactors, but you won't know. The nice thing about those two, they give you an alert when they're full, so they know to go down there and get them, which is great.
So is that it comes through some?
Yeah, just some electronic alert, yeah, yeah.
Connected to the grid in some way. I noticed in, in Director Berry's letter, which he laid out some of the needs that he wants, um, he talked about, um, composite trash barrels as opposed to the metal ones. Could you have any information of what that, are they sort of fiberglass? Or they wouldn't, you know, what they're sort of made of or?
I'm sorry, I'm not sure outside of composite materials. Uh, you know, when I think of that, I think it's sort of, you know, heavy recycled materials myself. But, um, they replaced, I think he said that's in that letter, 68 barrels, if I'm remembering correctly. Um, he said they replaced about 10 a year that rusted out because they are metal currently. So he'd like to get a plan of, you know, changing out to composites. Which are about $400 each, by the way.
One of the benefits of the solar compactors is that it's, um, they take, they hold twice the amount of trash that a regular compactor does, and so it sort of frees up some manpower to do other things. Is that?
That's the intent, yes.
The intent, that's the reason. And the ones that are on order, we're sort of looking at putting them in downtown Mystic.
Downtown Mystic, yes.
And then these ones, if, if it went, Park's letter would be in some of our parks, is that?
Yeah, he said, he was at, uh, looking to get four of them. One for, uh, two for Quantic Plains Park, one for Esker Point Beach, and one for Calvin Burrows as a start.
Um, do you know, are these funds for this, the nip tax, um, money that comes from? Is that something that's gonna be an ongoing every year? This is gonna?
Yes, unless the, unless the act gets repealed.
Unless the state changes it. And, uh, last question on the solar was, can they take everything that's put into them? You know, sometimes we have recycle bins and regular trash. Does, is the intent of a solar just to take?
Yeah, whatever would have went in the trash bin. And I don't know if they'd have separate things. I'm sure there'd be a form of recycling. I just don't know what that looks like, yeah.
And, um, this is kind of a cool little device, this, the handout that you gave us here. So this is?
A mini vacuum for trash, yeah.
So is this, is this made to sort of replace somebody who's walking beside the road type thing or?
Yeah, and there's, apparently it couldn't even kind of reach into trash, into, uh, some bins and things to suck up things, yeah.
And the cost on this is, you said?
Well, Greg was guessing, he's not priced that out. He was guessing approximately $200,000 somewhere. That's very, very ballpark, just to make that clear.
I like that it, um, is electric, which is kind of rechargeable. So it just saves us on fuel. All that, I know we've been, I, I, Gosa, we're switching, we're switching over to electric lawnmowers, and it's, it's made a huge difference in what we can do. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Franco.
Thank you. On the Beautification Committee, we had picked up so many nip bottles, um, like a large garbage bag, and I've been an advocate for years for the state to do something about these nips. And would like deposits on the bottles, but we'll take the funds until, um, technology can catch up. I've done my research. I looked at Groton. I've came up with 17 liquor stores, and of those three are also in the city. And, um, I believe the city should receive, uh, partial funding on this as well. I, um, was, um, in favor of the trash compactors as well as the barrels, and also of this, um, all-terrain litter vacuum, which, um, I had spoken to actually Mr. Bird about this prior to this and to see what Mr. Hanover was looking for potentially in this, um, from these funds. And, um, I am in full favor of this, and I think this would help with a lot of cleanups. So with that, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to allocate 15% of the 2023 nip funds received to the city of Groton. Then split the remaining funds 50/50. The first 50 to Parks and Rec for the solar compactors and composite trash barrels, and the remaining 50% to the Public Works to use towards mini trash vacuum vehicle. I so move.
Second, Jones?
Okay. Uh, the second, the first, I guess this is like 42 and a half percent. Where, where'd you say that?
Yeah, the first 15%.
Right.
On the, off the top would go to the city. And the remaining would be split 50/50 between Parks and Rec.
Okay.
And Public Works.
Okay.
The solar compactors and the composite trash barrels, and the other would go towards this mini trash vacuum vehicle. And as I've said, um, Groton has 17 liquor stores. Three of those are in the city, and hence why I came to a rounded figure of 17% would go to the city. And as, um, 15, I'm sorry. 15% would go to the city, and, um, the city does not receive funding for nips. Uh, Groton town as a whole receives the full funding, and they, um, because they consider it like, they don't consider the municipalities that are inside of towns. Groton town as a whole receives the full funding, and they, because they consider it like, they don't consider the municipalities that are inside of towns. I like compact trash cans, and I was hoping we could have the one in Mystic, so we would see how it would work by now, but I would like to do the best we can with Parks and Rec and get those for Esker Point, Aquatic Plains, and the Calvin Burrows locations, and as many barrels as he can purchase with that type of money. So I'm in favor of that, thank you very much, and I hope the rest of the council will be in favor of that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Board along?
Can I do my point of information first?
Well, it's your turn to speak.
So I have a question, because I can't speak until I understand what he said, that's why I asked.
It'll be part of your time.
So I'd like to, so I can use my time first and then do my point of information later if you want? I just wanted, before I ask my question, I'm just a little unclear what was stated, I was just asking for a simple understanding.
Okay.
If I may.
You can, you can ask the question, it'll run off your time, the amount of time it takes you to ask a question.
That's fine, I respect that. I'm just a little unclear, I went back and watched the meeting minutes from this, and I had made the recommendation of the trash compactors at the time. At the time, beautification talked about getting a big fish to throw like things to beaches, and there was no movement on the trash compactors, we didn't have the support up here. And it was also, you guys were going to get possibly some bladders for drainage and all that, so I guess that's my question, when?
It did pass for three compactors as part of the final motion resolution.
Right, and so my, my thing on the trash compactors, or my recommendation at that time for the trash compactors is overwhelmingly, you know, as someone who grew up in Mystic, up on High Street, the downtown, those bins being both blue, people couldn't differentiate between recyclable and trash. And I said, "Look at the model in Westerly where they had a trash and a recyclable solar." So my question, are we purchasing the ones that are on order? Are they trash and recyclable compactors?
I'd have to ask Greg, I'm not sure.
I just hope that they are, because if not, then we are, it's, that's why, it has, nothing has come back before the purchase, so that's why I'm a little puzzled, and that was my inquiry. If it isn't, then we should halt, because it does us no service to have a trash compactor and then a separate, non-look-alike recycle bin that doesn't compact as well. They do have a recycle trash and recycle receptor solar that compacts. That was my recommendation, and if you're saying three went forward, then?
I would imagine that Greg took the advice, but I'll, I'll don't chat.
Yeah, just there's been no update. I can agree that the city should get some, but I think all of our subdivisions, as far as Groton, Long Point, and every other area, John, what other areas were qualified that are not getting nips? That's my next question.
I don't know who else would?
GLP, their coastal community, I'm worried, downtown Noink, you know, where there's coastal walks.
Do they, I don't know if they, how is, I don't know if you would do it for other municipalities, but I think it's all based on like, the reasoning was all based on where our liquor stores that are recycling these or?
There is a liquor store in Noink.
At Carces, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's entirely up to the council.
So I just want to make sure before, I think tonight, I don't think we, we can go back and forth on this and do the due diligence, but I don't think we just give 15% to one side without really assessing, people go down to Esker Point and different, you know, areas, which that was brought up, and my plan was to make sure that these were uniform throughout the whole town, even on Route 1. So, but Noink is heavily trafficked with walkers and people wanting to see the village style and going to the lobster places and the different events down there. We also have a public dock down there. One would consider putting a trash compactor down there, people sit out on the lawn and eat and have picnic. So I really just want to make sure we hone in that percent of where different areas are going to go. And so I guess my question is, what areas are we kind of, would be considered subdivisions that possibly could qualify?
Well, the money initially isn't guaranteed to anyone but the town itself, so anything else is up to the council. So I'm not going to speak on other, because that's not part of the act to distribute to the others. But in terms of where Parks and Rec think they're needed, these first four are where they think the most trafficked areas are that are needed.
Right, I guess I'm speaking to the motion that was put on the floor, and I just want to?
Yeah, that's not my motion though, so that should be directed to the mayor.
Right, but my question to you is, what other areas are subdivision areas like GLP that in other places?
It's completely up to the council.
No, I'm asking what other areas are their own tax thing that you could just state for the record?
Well, fire districts have a tax, of course, yeah.
Mumford Cove, right?
But in terms of a, of a special subdivision, if you got GLP in the city.
What about Mumford Cove, they have a different tax, don't they?
Well, every fire district collects a tax.
All right, so I just asked that then, we look at a percent for Groton Long Point as well. If we're giving 15 to the city, then maybe three or four, but I definitely think we should add Noink in there. That's a coastal community tourist area, and I'm just not sure with the numbers today. We just need to dig into this a little bit deeper. But I'm excited to hear that they're finally on order, and I hope that there's recyclable component. I think it was a great recommendation that I made, was that a year ago? And we're still, still waiting. Thank you.
Council Westerville?
Thank you. Mr. Bird, I think you and I exchanged a couple of emails earlier this year about this. And at that point, no, none of the money had been spent, I believe, at that point. Have we spent any of the money? Is it, has that money been spent that we set aside last year for this?
I know the, the three have not been received, so I don't think public works have. They, they're in the middle of researching the, he's ordering, I know I asked him today, they're ordering the nets or whatever you want to call them. Beautification committee, I don't think they've, they're, they're going through a Noink zoning process for the fish, which has turned out to be a long process, so they, I don't believe they've spent any yet, but it's in progress.
So the mesh nets for the, the mesh nets for the?
Greg expects them to be ordered soon, and they've just been short-staffed, they've been almost two years without one of their engineers, so they're just really backed up.
Okay, thank you.
Council Jacome?
Only speaking on the amendment, correct, Mayor, right now?
Uh, there's no amendment, it's just, it's just?
Oh, the motion, I'm sorry.
Council Franco's motion.
So I guess, first question, was it, do we know how many street sweepers are owned?
I believe there's two.
Two. I think Council Westerville just mentioned with specific netting, what is, what was that about?
It goes in that we have approximately 4,000 drains. It goes into the drain to collect bulky waste, larger items that are flowing incorrectly down towards the drain.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just interested, I'm reading here, knowing that there's a bunch of little nips bottles flowing through our, our drainage system all the time, just, me just doing my usual walk around, noticed a bunch of little nips everywhere. What is the current process for anybody requesting these funds?
That's, that's part of why this has come here, is for the council to decide what they want to do.
So there's really no process right now? So if funds were to be requested, they would just reach out to the council, is that what you're saying? And then, or end with you?
Yeah, I mean, people have, we've not asked people, other than public works, public works as they're under me, Parks and Rec on their own requested, anyone else to just reach out. There's been no outreach from the town proper, so.
I think I could see myself supporting an allocation to the city and/or any of the subdivisions, but I think I want to know that there's some sort of a game plan going on. So I don't think currently I could support amendment, or the motion, I'm sorry, on the floor, unless we could have maybe some more discussion here, because I'd love to see if these systems have worked. For example, the, the compactors, like you said, we haven't seen them work, correct?
Right.
So I would like to know how that would, I mean, it sounds good on paper, but I would like to see how they're working down in Mystic and things like that. So I could see myself supporting it, I just can't support it right now. Thank you.
Just a couple of questions. The first year allocation was $79,199. Is there any reason to believe that year two will be significantly higher or lower, or maybe about the same?
Well, based on the same, you know, the first collection of last year was just being, I'm not sure quite equal to full year. What we've seen in this, this first payment of this year is quite a bit higher than the first payment of last year, so we anticipate it'll be about that $90,000-ish.
About $90,000, okay.
Should be relatively similar.
Maybe similar, okay, so if it's at about $90,000, this motion's for 42.5% to Parks and Rec. Would that cover, I'm seeing the bins, the barrels are about 4,000, but for the?
Or under each.
For solar powered trash compactors, would that be covered?
That's about 7K each.
7,000 each?
Hmm.
Okay, that's 28 and 4, okay, so that covers it, so we're over. All right, thank you, that's all I needed to know. Council Board along?
What would be the process? I think, I think we should have a meeting and invite our subdivisions, I think that's the first step. I think we need to map it out, look at where these trash things can be. And I do think, if we're not even sure they have a recyclable component yet, I don't think we should be allocating anything yet until we know exactly what's being purchased, because again, it should be a trash and recyclable solar compactor. And on the, on that record, that day I brought up the example that Westerly has downtown. Probably newer models since then. So my, my question too is what you're saying about zoning and Noink regarding the fish? That's my first question.
There was a plan submitted to the Noink zoning commission. I think they were still working, the artist was still working with their zoning official, Bill Mulholland, and then it has to, I think, I think he had to determine if it was going to go to the planning, the zoning commission, so.
For what?
For the fish. It actually takes zoning approval.
To build it?
Yeah, it's, it's pretty large. It's like, I forget, but it's something like 18 feet or something.
Where would it go?
Esker, well, they're requesting Esker Point.
Oh, you mean the location that it ends up at?
Yeah.
Council Board, Council Board along on the floor?
Sorry.
Did you?
What's the, we had no?
What was the question? I think, okay.
I was asking about the fish and where that stands, that was a recommendation from beautification, correct?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
And where, so it's not been built yet, it's still in process?
It's being built.
My understanding is, before getting approval, they've already had it start building.
Okay.
I think this meeting would be better served having Greg Hanover here to discuss like the specs, what type people want the model, how much it holds, how many we think we need, I think inviting our subdivisions, inviting the planning and zoning from Noink to talk about, you know, the structures and areas down there. Would planning and zoning have to approve these compactors to be placed down there?
I wouldn't think so.
No. But I really think that there should be a model, because we just don't have enough information. And I think this would be better served as a working meeting and inviting those subdivisions just before blindly, in my opinion, allocating money and not knowing. Has there been an email from the city requesting 15% or?
No, well, I, no, not for 50%. Mayor Hedrick's brought it up a couple times in the past that he thought the city should share in it, but nothing formal.
Anything come in an email?
No.
Could, yeah, it would be great so that all councils are aware of those communications and interests.
Yeah.
As a city resident myself.
Yeah, but a lot of times people just call me, so it's not always going to be email.
Yeah, but even just, you know, hey, the mayor of the city is requesting some of the funding, you know, to just send some information out, that'd be helpful.
And that was before last year's discussion, so it's been a long while.
Yeah, all right.
And it may have been said at that time.
Yeah. I just don't think we're ready to, I, I like the trash cans, we haven't got them yet, they're on order. When would they order?
I'm not sure. Not long ago, because they haven't been received yet.
Right, so I do think we need to have Greg Hanover here and kind of map out a plan as to, you know, the deployment of those, and I think we need to invite our subdivisions and Noink and GLP and really kind of make a plan to, you know, see how this roll out. I'm interested in this trash suction machine, but I know on the other hand, people were complaining that a lot of our public works machines cost a lot of money to maintain. I don't think we're there yet, I think it's a great idea. I think first let's get the trash receptacles around where people can find them and identify them, and they're not overflowing or blowing down, up and down Mystic streets. And then this might be something, but it's not just the cost of it, it's what's to maintain it. So I do think we're a little far from that, even though I like it, so that's why I would not support the recommendation that's on the floor by Council Franco, because we just don't have enough information. And I would love to make sure we're including all subdivisions and talking about Tagosa and the conservation, about placement at some of these parks. Wolfbrook property we just purchased, I mean, these are hiking trails, so.
Thank you.
Just keep in mind, we would only make, we'd only collect, those agencies would have to collect them themselves though, just to make that clear.
Thank you.
I just would like the discussion.
Thank you, Council Parker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Question is, are we, can we confirm the number of establishments that sell nip bottles? If there's 17, and just to confirm if we can get that information, that would be, would that confirm?
It's already been pulled up, so.
It's already been pulled up, but Council Board along brought up someone else. Brought up someone else, but I want to confirm that they sell nip bottles before we do that. So I'm actually going to make a motion. I'm going to move to lay the motion on the table, so I'm going to temporarily suspend consideration of this issue of the motion on the floor.
Okay, laying the table has to be picked up later in the meeting.
Now, at the, later in the meeting, does that, it doesn't say that in here? I think temporary suspend.
I think in Rogers rules it.
Temporary suspend consideration of issues, I can move it, or I can move the, postpone the discussion. Never mind, I'll move to postpone the discussion until.
And I would recommend then, let's get those three in and see how they work, and see how much they actually save in trash.
Which is where I was getting ready to go with that. So I'm going to move to postpone the discussion until, I'm going to say the end of August, with the potential of hearing that we have purchased and received the compact, trash compactors. It might be a little delay because?
It might be a little too early, yeah. So I would just, you know, I would keep it to when we actually receive them and have, a month to see how much we have to collect them, et cetera, once they're installed.
Well, I have to give a time date under this one, I believe, so.
Just give a time certain.
Is this debatable?
Can it be, is it debatable? Yes, it is.
Council Parker, you can move to a time certain, it'll come to the agenda, and if you still feel you don't have the information, you can just make the motion again. If the council wants to postpone again, they can postpone again.
I don't even have a second.
I'll second.
Okay, what was the day?
Till, I'm going to say?
Second cow in August, or?
I'm going to say the second cow in September, that gives us a little, almost six weeks, six to eight weeks.
That'd be the 26th of September. I would hope by then we'd have some information.
Okay. That's a motion by Parker and a second by Jacome. It's debatable. Did you like to speak to it, or you feel like you spoke to it?
I heard concerns from both. I, I understand that Council Board along wants the subdivisions here, but I want also clear definition of the nips and where they're sold at, if that comes into play. Because if it, if they're not the establishments, the subdivisions, all the subdivisions aren't selling nips, then I don't think a percentage should be under consideration. I understand Council Franco's motion, because there are three establishments in the city of Groton selling nips. I just want firm information before we tell a subdivision how to do their process, because each process is going to be different, and they have their own planning and zoning and others in, in taking consideration. So, that's my reasoning.
Okay, just remember, we're only discussing whether to postpone the discussion or decide it tonight. Council Board along?
Ah, yes, I think I can support that. I do think that we do need to look at all the information as it was discussed for the reason for this motion. I also think, and I'm trying to understand, my thing is nip bottles travel. And so we should be looking at the whole community as a coastal community, and the need for these dispensers all throughout the community. So, I also, I have a question for the town manager. Is there anything precluding us from having a meeting and coming around the table earlier and not waiting until August, even though we don't have the machines yet? I think it would be important if you could get?
Process.
I'm sorry?
To discuss general process.
Just discuss, correct.
Sure.
And bring conservation, you have goes the recommendations, we should bring everybody in to discuss this as a, as a community, and bring in the stakeholders. Also, if they're already purchased and they're not the right ones, then we want to make sure that they are.
I, I would be hugely shocked if they mixed the two, so.
Yeah, no, no.
But I'll double check.
And that would be great to have Greg here, so maybe a meeting where Greg can come and talk about that as well. As I did discuss, there is a place in Noink. As far as GLP goes, the fishermen, I guess, is not considered fully GLP, but I don't think they sell nip bottles there anyways, I'm not sure on the other thing. But what I'm looking at, and I did some reading of other towns, nip bottles travel within the community. It's not just where the package stores are. People take them to the water, they take them on trails, they're drinking everywhere. That's the concern, and so it should be a town-wide cleanup effort. And so, my other question? And so, my other question, when do you plan to...once received, will Greg be reporting about any of the maintenance costs to maintain these as well and what we need to do, because I don't want to just spend all the money?
The compactors?
Yeah, and give it to all these different entities and not have the money to maintain these compactors. So, we want to leave something there, because there's going to be maintenance involved as well.
I don't know if they'll have a good cost on that until you get into using them for a while.
Okay, thank you. Just remember, we're only discussing whether to postpone the discussion.
Yeah. I think postponement is appropriate if we do not have enough information, and again, as the recommendation from a while ago that I put forward, it's great to hear they're finally being purchased, and I just think that waiting is better than being proactive, reactive up here and just blankly putting things out that we're not sure of yet. So, I can agree with Counsel Parker on the postponement. Thank you.
Counsel Franco?
Thank you. I will...I'd just like to notate that I did the research. There were 17 liquor stores. Maybe there's one or two plus or minus. There is one in Noink, but the town of Groton maintains, Public Works maintains their roads. So, they're the ones who take care of the sewers and...or, I'm sorry, the water storm drains and the roads and such. So, allocating it to their planning and zoning department doesn't really help anything. I mean, it's...and it's about, you receive the money based on the amount of NIPs sold in your community, and that's why Groton Town got the money, and I think the city is in need of such. I would also like to notate, even if we get $90,000, it is such a small amount of money to come up with big policies and bring in every division, and I mean, we've gone through this before. It's like, this is not millions of dollars. If we had millions of dollars on the table, I would be all for that, but in all reality, it's like $90,000. If we give them 15% to the city and 50% of the remainder to Parks and Rec and the other 50% to Public Works, it's going to take Public Works maybe five to six years of saving that money to be able to even buy a piece of equipment. So, it's not like this is a whole lot of money. And then, every year, we could do as, like, for Public, Parks and Rec, we can do things every year. It's like...so, I just want to say, I will support to table it, so you can get information, but I would also like to notate that these trash compactors have been used in communities for, like, well over a decade now, and they're obviously still in use, and they're doing...I can see them in many communities, and they are continuing to use them. So, I don't see...if all these other communities are continuing to use them and haven't heard any major pushback on them, I don't know what the issue is. But I will respect the request to postpone this for more information, but I don't know if we have to have our own in our own community, or if we just should have information, I mean, from other communities, maybe, if we could check into what other communities are doing, and do they have problems with those? I mean, they've been around for decades, so...but I will respect the request to postpone. Thank you.
A point of information?
You have a second term to speak.
Sure, I'll speak then. I just want to clear that I never said planning and zoning would handle it. I was just asking, do they have an oversight of this? My question also is, do we want to just give municipalities a percent of money, or do we want to just make sure they have the trash compactors? That's the difference. I think it's better to give the trash compactors as part of the percent. When you look at $90,000 and you look at $7,000, that's 12 trash compactors. It's not a lot, but when you have no trash compactors, that's 12 we could purchase, and if they've already purchased three, we could purchase 12 more possibly. That's where the money should go, is finding a place to put these that are secure. That's what I was asking. So, to the town manager, I mean, this money use, is it...I guess my question, the wording I'm trying to read here, is it indicative to where the NIPs are sold, or is it the whole town wide? I didn't see anything that I read off the state website that said it had to be, like, because Noink doesn't have a place or does, that that changes its part of the whole town.
It's entirely up to council policy.
Okay, all right, yeah. Because NIPs are traveling, that's the problem. They're washing up in our waterways, and people are traveling with them. So, I just...I think that we need to postpone this, as I stated, and I think it needs to be a community...and I agree. When I brought up the Westerly ones, they have been around for a long time. They work great, solar, recyclable, and trash. We are still waiting to get ours, the three that we allocated a while ago. I don't think we need to wait for those to see how they work. I think we need to have a meeting to discuss how, as a community, we want to deploy these. I think personally upfront, more of this money should be deployed towards the trash receptacles on the front end. I personally am not in support of moving a ton of money to beautification to start and not getting the trash receptacles in place. So, it's kind of...you've got to have a place to store before you can beautify, and that's, you know, that's...you've got to have a...we do not have trash cans up and down Route 1. They're not readily available throughout our community in any form. We are behind the curve on that, so...
And keep in mind, again, we're not going to be able to increase the number of total places we collect from, though with these bins, maybe you could reduce the number, you know, of the bins. However, you're not going to be able to add it on a lot of separate locations that we would maintain. If you give it to some places, it would be them maintaining it, so...
Right. I mean, the point in what I saw in the models is towns are putting these in, and they're not having to go to them as often, so they were able to add accessibility, like Route 1 down by in front of, like, the town hall building and things like that. People are walking and can utilize them. So, I think we just need to really map this out, move it out, and get it out there. As we grow in economic development downtown Mystic, the conservation came before us and talked about downtown Mystic as a concern with all the development. This is an answer to one of those things, is getting those in place properly. It's a high-traffic area on a watercoast front, so I think we should be deploying more of the money to collection areas that are also storm...they're heavy, they don't blow over, the lids can't, they're not chained to the...currently, we have things chained to downtown Mystic. We just need to clean that up and beautify it. So, I think this is a great thing, and I look forward to bringing this forward at some point and having the discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. We're only discussing postponement of the discussion. Counsel Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm also in favor of Counselor Parker's motion to postpone. I think it's a good idea. We'll get a little more information. I'm not particularly in favor of bringing all these different parties in, basically because Parks and Rec and Public Works are the ones who deal with these issues. They know where the problems are. They're the ones that manage them, and they manage all the roads, so I think they have a pretty good handle. Just a question, Mr. Burt, is Route 1 is a state property. Are we allowed to even put things like this on state roads?
I don't want to answer that. I'd rather Greg answer that.
I mean...[1655.25]